Welcome to our board meeting. The pledge tonight will be led by Mr. Wayne Boy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. For those, we have a lot of visitors tonight, which we're glad to see. We have a work session two nights usually prior to the board meeting, so we seem to be going quickly through some stuff. It's because we've talked about it previously. Approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. All right, that takes us... Does it take us? This is not my normal computer. Yeah. Obviously, there's a lot of interest in some, what to call it, discussion, talk that's going on in the media and elsewhere, I guess, about issues related to religion, particularly Muslims. So, Mr. Oden, why don't you see if you can clear the air a little bit?
Okay, we thought we would make a statement kind of at the beginning so that you could understand some things, and then we'll go on with the agenda and give you a chance to speak. There's nothing on the agenda tonight to deal with the Muslim religion or Islam. There has not been. There's been a number of media outlets, radio talk shows and things saying that it would be on the agenda tonight. It's not on the agenda. This Board of Education operates by the open meeting law. Anything that's on our agenda, you'll be able to see. We do not add items at the last minute on the agenda because the board members and the public sees this agenda approximately one week ahead of time and gets a chance to study it. As Dr. Burns said, we discuss it at a work session, usually a couple of days before Tuesday of this week. So what you see basically on the Internet will be what will be on the agenda for that evening. I would like to show you, Amy, could you flash up where the public could see that for us to see? It is? If you'll see at the bottom of the front page of Rutherford County Schools, each time, each meeting that we have, the agenda will be posted, so you can go look at it and see. Tonight, our broadcast, if it's not live, sometimes it's taped, delayed, and played over Rutherford County Channel. Other times, you can also click and get it live over the Internet. So there's a number of ways that you can see what business we might be conducting.
And it's also on YouTube. If you want to see back meetings and you don't catch it on Channel 19 or live, you can go to YouTube, and there's a Rutherford County YouTube site where all our back meetings are held.
Let me address a few of the things that we've received emails on and may have been talked about in the last few days. One of those was a teacher's guide that was sent out in 2008. And basically, when we were first asked about it, no one up here remembered it. And, well, let me tell you why. Because, because as a public school system, we receive predominantly on an annual basis, we will receive from the Jewish Foundation their holidays for the year. We will receive from very often the ACLU or other organizations. These are students' rights. Make sure you follow it. It's not uncommon at all for us to receive annually a number of emails or mails related to religions or other activities for students and things like that. It really doesn't bring anything up the ladder. The email that was in 2008, we did not view as a demand or anything from that. If we had, there would have been board action. There's been no board action. There's not been anything brought to this board relating to that. So we view that in the same manner that we view all of these other documents, which I've mentioned to you before. That was a teacher's guide, I think, to what students or students of Islam might believe. Another thing that's been dealing with was an awareness training, and that was in May There was a training then. The U.S. Department of Justice came to Rutherford County and asked that there be some training. They asked Rutherford County Schools to host that. We did not host that at that time. That was... And it was, I think they approached Murfreesboro City Schools, and they did host that. We sent about four or five people that were invited to go and attend that. They did. It's a learning session. Before you can make a decision sometime or understand, you have to have enough knowledge to know what may be being asked or what's involved. Again, from that session, there were no board policy changes, no operational changes that came out of that meeting. It was information and a learning session for us, so there's not been a result of that. If a policy change is going to be made, you need to realize as the public, we have a policy committee. Every one of these board members are on that policy committee. Citizens of Rutherford County are on that policy committee. Some teachers are on that policy committee. Those meetings are broadcast. They're open. You're welcome to attend. There's an agenda for that. And once the policy committee considers a policy, and there's no, we actually have a policy meeting coming up next week, there's nothing on this policy committee related to this at all, to Muslim or Islam. And we do probably three policy meetings a year or something like that. There's nothing on this one at all that's coming up next week. You're welcome to come. It's on 23rd. Is that right? I think. At five o'clock here, very often, it's televised also. So there's, it takes, after the policy committee considers it, it takes then two additional readings from the Board of Education before it can become policy for the Rutherford County Board of Education. So nothing is done in haste, and it's in front of, anyone can see it. I mean, you're welcome to attend that. All board agendas, again, are published, all, again, televised and online. The other thing that's mentioned was textbooks. Textbooks are selected or are chosen really by the state. Vendors or textbook publishers present books to the state for consideration. We use state monies for textbooks to purchase them. So the state publishes a list, then each school district chooses from that list. This summer, they were considering reading books. So this next year, Rutherford County will be in a process of looking at the reading books that were passed this summer with the review panel, the state review panel, and then we'll make a selection or recommendation to the board of one of those reading books to choose. There are some citizens that can serve on this state. You'd have to go to the State Department of Education to offer your name or something if you want to participate in that. Textbooks are chosen for a six-year duration. So again, those are open with most of your major vendors being published. But again, tonight, there's not, our textbooks will be adopted from that. There's not anything related to Islam or Muslim religion or, to my knowledge, anything planned. There's nothing in the policy meeting next week or anything planned relating to this.
Mr. Oden, thank you for that. That was really, I think, a helpful and a clear discussion description of the way we operate. So I guess I would urge all of you, if you have questions or concerns, call us, email us. Don't necessarily believe what you hear at the store or hear in media outlets as being the truth. Now, we have, I think, eight or so visitors who've signed up to speak, and every board meeting, not at work sessions, but every board meeting, you, the public, have an opportunity to speak. We welcome you to do that. So we do ask, just in the interest of time, that you limit yourself to three minutes, but we're glad for you to come and speak to us. So tonight, first off, we have Mr. Kevin Fisher. Welcome, Mr. Fisher.
Hi, how you doing? Y'all a little proud of tonight? I come tonight as a parent. Like many people here, I'm concerned. I heard about, as many of us have, about emails that have been sent between Ms. McCord and the local ICM, and we believe very strongly that it's inappropriate. This community's fought very hard to ensure that the rights of every citizen is respected and to bring an ideology in that could foster some element of segregation. We read about the separate classes that have been proposed for the boys and the girls. I've heard about in Hampton, Michigan, where they had an all-girls prom. The United States versus Virginia very specifically and clearly said that these type of classes are inappropriate. So I'm here tonight to assure you and to let you know that we, as a community, are going to stand up for the rights of Title IX and for our young women and for the rights of every child to receive the best education that they possibly can. I'm also concerned about, I guess you could say, the Islamization of the school system. We don't want to see one particular ideology receiving preferential treatment over others. I noticed you referenced a minute ago respectfully that you had an Islamic awareness, and as individual parents, of course, they have a right to have their concerns noted as individual parents, but as, if we're going to use the ideology that they're a religion, then they should fall in line with every other religion. If you're going to have an awareness for the Islamic faith, for the Islamic religion, then you should have one for the Christian religion, the Buddhist religion, the Hindu religion, the Mormon religion. To be honest, the school system has difficult enough time as it is teaching children reading, writing, and arithmetic. You shouldn't be going into that element of religion as well. I know y'all have a very difficult task, and we respect the job that you do. We're asking that you simply respect us as parents. We send our children to you to get an education, and that's what we want them to get. Leave the religion to the parents, and I say that respectfully.
Thank you. Ms. Martin? Is she coming? Oh, okay. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Candy Martin. My son is Joshua Martin. He attends Central Magnet, and he plays football with Eagleville. I'm here tonight representing the roughly 22 players and families from Central Magnet who are involved in the Eagleville football program. Josh is entering his third year of playing for Eagleville, and he's really enjoyed it. Before we go any further, we're so thankful for the opportunity to play at Eagleville. We appreciate them so much. They have been amazing. They have welcomed our boys in as one of their own, the parents, the staff, everybody. And we've truly been able to play as one team, and we greatly appreciate that. That being said, there is the obvious issue of transportation to Eagleville from Central. Understandably, when Central first opened its doors as a Magnet School and the discussion of football was brought up, we were told that we could play with Eagleville as long as we provided our own transportation. We were a new school. No one really knew how that was going to pan out. We didn't know how many kids would be interested in playing. We didn't know what it was going to really look like. I understand that, you know, it could have been a cost issue for just a handful of children being transported down to Eagleville, and that would not have been very cost-effective. We are now entering our third season of playing with Eagleville, and we currently have 12 kids on the high school team. We have 10, or 11 freshmen and one sophomore. We have 10 middle school boys on the team. That gives us a total of 22 Central students playing right now that are committed for Eagleville this year. That gives us 22 families and students that are commuting daily from Central to Eagleville for practices. We're currently carpooling, but as you can imagine, that can be a little tricky as well just with logistical nightmare of the whole trying to get siblings where they need to go, just the fact that our students come from different areas of the counties. We're not all centrally located in Murfreesboro. We've got boys from Laverne, Smyrna, Rockville, some that are in Eagleville. You know, we've got a logistical nightmare trying to carpool efficiently. Other than the logistics and the travel time, which is about 30 to 40 minutes for most families that are coming either from Laverne or Murfreesboro to travel back and forth, we're starting to get to the point where our sons are going to start driving. We've got 11 boys who are entering the high school this year who, within a year and a half, will have driver's license. That's a little scary as a parent because we're thinking we're going to have 11 boys who are going to possibly need to be transporting themselves from school to Eagleville for practice. You know, we would love to keep carpooling and taking them, but logistically, I know there's going to be a lot of boys on the road just because of scheduling conflicts with families. It's always a time crunch when we leave Central to get to Eagleville in time for practice. It's a time crunch for the parents. We're rushing the kids out. You know, the kids were given permission to leave just a few minutes early when the bussers leave, to get to the cars, so we can get them packed up and get down in time for practice, so we're not holding up the coaches and the staff at Eagleville.
Ms. Martin, your time is up, so can you sort of cut to the chase?
Absolutely, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
So basically, that's another concern. We're concerned about the safety, the boys rushing to get down there in time, and, you know, being new drivers, that might not be a good thing. Our only final concern would be the numbers of students that get to play. I do know for a fact that there are some that do not play because they're not, they do not have the possibility to be transported down there. I think we would have a lot more kids that would love the opportunity to play if they were given that and if transportation were provided, or we could work something out together. That would be great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, Ms. Susan Cobb? Welcome, Ms. Cobb.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Susan Cobb, and I am also a parent from Central Magnet School, and I just want to add a few things to what Candy said. I'm here to ask for consideration for some help with transportation for the football players as well from Central Magnet to Eagleville. I'm a detail person, so I just sat down quickly this afternoon and figured out since practice started in February for this year, we have driven to Eagleville 88 times. The workout hours so far, 213. Driving hours, 110. So that's 323 hours that a family has to commit, just so far, and school hasn't even started yet, to driving. So I just wanted you to know why we're asking. I kind of figured out that if, we typically drive there and stay and come back, and that's where the 323 hours has come in so far, which would be at a 40-hour work week, that's like I've had to commit eight weeks to just drive, to be able to play football. And again, we're so happy that we can, that Eagleville has welcomed us, and it's been a great fit. But when you think about gas money and just the time, you know, I'm so glad our boys get to play, but just one more example, today, I didn't have five hours to sit out there. So my, we had to spend, we had to go out, drop off, come back, go get them, and come back. I spent two hours on the road today for one football practice. So we would love, if you all have any ideas, we would love some help with the transportation because the first year, 50 boys signed up to play. They were so excited. Brand-new school, 50 boys wanted to play, and it dropped to 10 when they found out about the driving conditions because most people can't do it. So thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. Dr. Norman Saliba? Welcome, Doctor.
Thank you, sir. If I'm not speaking loud enough, let me know. I had a hearing aid in, and I lost it on the way here. So I'm doing fine. So I'm not here to criticize the board. I'm sure y'all have had plenty of that, and I'm not here to criticize... Somebody should have told me to cut that thing off. I'm 84 years old. For the last 20 years or so. The only thing I've occupied my mind with mostly has been my practice. I practiced surgery for 40 years, and emergency, this is going to stay open. And we've lived over nearly college for about 21 years or so. My main interest during that time, as I was going to say, is I'm a life member of the John Birch Society. I don't know what you know about it, but it's the world's largest anti-communist organization. When I heard this business going on about a church and about a mosque, I went down and I saw some of the students that had been trained using all the communist signs, upside, down, across, all of them. And I knew they had to be trained by someone. I simply called the headquarters of the Birch Society and mentioned what was going on. Our chief national editor had studied this a little bit, and he said, "Well, I guarantee you that most of that locally is communist control because they use exactly the same symbols. They use exactly the same techniques." And this is the thing I want to emphasize to the board. We appreciate your work. We know you have some hard decisions to make, but I want to appeal to your Christianity. I think most of the people in this room are, I didn't count the heads that were bowed, but I wonder who you were bowing, because you worked for Christ. I may have misheard. We're dealing with a worldwide situation, and Murfreesboro just happens to be the city that they chose. Now, why they chose this, I haven't checked with the Alphabell yet, but they did tell me the very first thing when I called them was that they have been tracing this, following this movement, and it's much obvious it's communist control. But what I want to emphasize to you is a term that the communists have used very successfully for several hundred years. It's called patient gradualism. It's two steps forward and one step back. Don't forget that because it's going to face you right here. It's facing you right now. They can present themselves...
Dr. Saliba, your time is up.
As a person entirely different, a person who does not know all of this, will very rapidly fall into that trap. We have several people locally that feel there's nothing wrong with the movement here. They just won't practice their religion.
Dr. Saliba?
If that's all.
Sir, your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you could just wrap up in a few words.
I apologize. May I read one thing out of the paper here? It's short.
If it's short, go right ahead.
It says what I, if y'all didn't see the paper this past week, this is it. It's by an authority. How much time did I have? No, I'm sure...
You had three minutes, like everybody else.
Real fast, didn't it? This is from an article by an authority that has been a governing authority, and there's one paragraph in this whole thing that struck me, and I think you ought to read it again. It says, "And this is what the current administration, including the intelligence and law enforcement agencies, American media, and far too many of us in the society as a whole fail to grasp, whether intentionally or not, that the Islamic imperative to engage in Dawa, which is a form of jihad, ingrained into every Muslim who seriously practices that faith, is almost reflexively acted upon unless," now, this is key, I want you to run this now. It sounds right here, "unless it is made abundantly clear that it will not be tolerated." It is not to say that Muslims cannot practice their religion. Of course they can. They can even try to convert folks. But unless Muslims are convinced that they will not be granted a special status in such non-Muslim lands as ours, they will continue to insist on being given a Maw whenever they are given a Nith. The control of this country is as lame as the Muslims. They want to control the world, and you happen to be the center of attention right now. Just remember, I believe, my belief is in God, and not a homon or anyone else.
All right, thank you, Doctor. Mr. Wayne Harwell. Mr. Harwell, are you here? Mr. Wayne Harwell?
Yes, I am. But I did not wish to speak tonight.
Okay. Ms. Susan Harris? Ms. Harris? Welcome.
Hey there. I came with a speech all prepared, but since we can't talk about Islam tonight, I'll forego it to another night. I will make it short and sweet. After 9/11, I started doing some serious research about Islam. I wanted to know what kind of religion would hijack planes and crash them into buildings in order to kill as many innocent human beings as possible. Okay? I've spent that many, what, 11 years studying. I don't think it's much of a religion, but the Supreme Court deemed it so in 1989. So the ACLU has spent the past 60 years trying to make sure that Christianity is banned. We can't pray. We have a moment of silence here. The Ten Commandments is taken out of our judicial buildings. Are we better off for that? I don't think so. But anyway, I have some literature here. Islam 101. I brought a copy for all of you. I hope you'll read it, and I hope you understand, just out of curiosity, because I know Muslims say they have to pray five times a day, and that is the reason they need a prayer room in our public schools. So I Googled that this afternoon, and three hours when I Googled it, Khomeini, their supreme leader, had just posted this on the Internet. It says that there's nowhere in the Quran that they are required to pray three, five times a day. They are required three times: sunrise, sunset, and bedtime. Therefore, they don't need a prayer room in our public school system. That debunks that lie, which is tikhia. Tikhia in Islam is they can lie, they can cheat, they can do whatever to promote the cause of Islam. It's religious deception, and I hope you don't buy it. Thank you.
You want to give it to the board member?
Mr. Paul Townsend? Paul Townsend? Is Mr. Townsend here? Okay. I'm sorry. He is coming or he's not coming? Oh, okay, you're saying no? Okay. That's all of our speakers. We'll take a short break. Y'all are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Urge you to stay and see what the school board does, but if you'd like to leave us, you're welcome to do that, too. So we'll start again in five minutes. So we'll start again in five minutes.
So, give the inch, board.
I guess it'll be another thirty seconds? I don't want to try to introduce people while this is going on.
I understand. Best respect.
I'm inclined to say we can't help but find something to work out of that situation. I haven't given ten minutes.
If y'all let the door shut, please. Ma'am? Yeah, please. We can't hear without it. Thank you. Thanks. Okay, we're ready for number seven.
I'm pleased tonight to introduce some new administrators for our two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. I'm gonna ask them to stand. The first one is the new assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction, Mr. Richard Zago. Mr. Zago, if you'll please stand. Mr. Zago took my place in curriculum and instruction. We have a new Holloway High School principal, Ms. Sumatra Drayton. We also have a new Siegel High School principal, Mr. Ken Nolan retired this year. So our new Siegel High School principal is Mr. Jason Bridgman. Also have a new Smyrna Middle School principal, Jeannie Nicholson. And at Stewart's Creek Elementary, Mr. Zago came from Stewart's Creek Elementary, so his replacement as a principal is Ginger Tucker. And filling another retirement, our Thurman Francis Arts Academy principal is Mr. Jeff Duke. All of these people are experienced and we really expect great things. They're already involved, they're already planning for a new year. So some very good applicants applied and we have some very good choices. I'm very pleased.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Congratulations on your new positions and we look forward to working with you. Number eight.
Number eight, this is under facilities, Thurman Francis Arts Academy canopy. Mr. Jeff Duke has requested permission to construct an aluminum canopy on the end of the main building perpendicular to the outdoor classroom at Thurman Francis Arts Academy. The canopy totals five hundred and sixty square feet and will be constructed at a cost of five thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars to be paid for using existing PTO funds at no cost to the Rutherford County Board, School Board. The recommended approval, the motion is to approve construction of a five hundred and sixty square foot aluminum canopy at Thurman Francis Arts Academy at no cost to the board.
I couldn't hear. Was there a motion?
I'm sorry.
Did somebody? Again, was there a second? Okay. Discussion?
We did forward to the board the location of that canopy. You probably received an email where between the annex and the main building, mainly to load car rations.
On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. B.
Okay, this is the naming of a Blackberry Elementary School outdoor classroom. The Rutherford County School Board approved construction of an outdoor classroom at Blackman Elementary School on September the twenty-seventh, two thousand eleven, at the regular board meeting. The classroom is now complete and the Blackman Elementary School PTO has requested permission to name the outdoor classroom the Cynthia Ford Outdoor Classroom in honor of Principal Cynthia Ford. There's a motion to approve naming of the Blackman Elementary School outdoor classroom the Cynthia Ford Outdoor Classroom as presented.
So move. Second. Any discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. C.
And you heard a presentation on number C Tuesday evening. This is the Smyrna High School scoreboards. Smyrna High School is requesting permission to obtain two scoreboards for the football and baseball programs through sportable scoreboards. These scoreboards will not cost Rutherford County Board of Education or Smyrna High School any money. The scoreboards are valued at twenty thousand dollars for the football and eighteen thousand for baseball. Sportable scoreboards offer a score rewards program in which advertisements are sold to sponsors which are then placed on a scrolling electronic message panel at the top of the scoreboard. However, if sportable scoreboards cannot secure enough sponsors, the scoreboards will not be installed. Sportable scoreboards are responsible for all installation and upkeep of the scoreboards. And the motion is to approve for sportable scoreboards to install and provide upkeep to two scoreboards at Smyrna High School at no cost to Rutherford County schools.
So move. Second. Any discussion? We had a lengthy discussion of this the other night, seemed like.
Noted also that Mr. Powell, principal of Smyrna High, was in attendance Tuesday night and did an excellent job explaining the details.
Right. Other discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. Number nine.
Number nine is under financial matters. EIS, which stands for Educational Information System Clerical Position. The two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen general purpose school budget included a new full-time, twelve-month clerical position that will be used to reconcile our attendance figures in the STAR student data systems with the state's educational information system, EIS. The state has been calculating every system's BEP allocation from the information systems have been manually entering in the EIS system. This manual override process is ending and our attendance for funding purposes will be calculated on the figures generated in EIS. The difference between STAR and EIS is due to more than one system or school, including a student in its EIS reporting. And students who may not correctly be scheduled in the system, and again, no school will get credit for a student that shows in multiple schools at the same time. The difference between our STAR's attendance figures and EIS has been running about three point twenty-five percent. The employee in this position will be responsible for identifying and correcting these errors so that our BEP allocation will be based on the correct attendance numbers. And the motion is to approve filling the EIS clerical position that is included in the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen general purpose school budget.
So move. Second. Discussion?
I think, Don, it might be, Mr. Odom, excuse me.
That's mine.
Might be worth mentioning again the possible savings to the system or whatever. I mean, where the, how many dollars and cents could be involved in this position?
Three and a quarter percent does not look too large until you're thinking of almost forty thousand students. So a potential loss to Rutherford County could be in about six thousand dollars per student in average daily membership. So if you're around a thousand students off, you're talking about a six million dollar potential loss. Much of this, we'd have very little control over. They have been allowing us to enter, the STAR student management system is the one that's a daily upkeep in your school. And so they have been allowing us to combine reports from each school, total those up for an ADM, average daily membership number, and then manually enter that into the state system. They're telling us they're gonna stop that. So we have to go in and make sure that there are corrections. This individual will be contacting other school systems. If there happens to be an active enrollment that has a day overlap, those are called block approval errors and so neither system will get paid for the student. So it's a matter of communication, it's a matter of seeing if there's data that needs to be entered. I don't know whether many of you know, but by the time we enter all the demographics, all of the courses that students taking for a system our side, there's several million pieces of data that are in the whole system when you consider every student together. So this is a clerical position to help us clean that up so that when the state says no more manual entries, that we can be as close as possible to being able to get the funding that we deserve and we are.
Don.
What, in talking with Mr. Mays, what will be an acceptable error on this? What's his goal to bring it down to?
Goal is none. But again, as I said the other night, one of the problems that we run into, for example, and I used one example the other night, if a student leaves us and goes to another public school system in Tennessee, if they happen to enter that student on the incorrect, incorrect date, that was the last day they were with us, that's blocked. If they happen to enter that as a new student, what they're supposed to do is to go into the state system, look that student up, that student's been in Roan County public schools, now transferred to Rutherford County, and use the same student ID number. And then if that's done correctly, then whenever they left Roan County, they would have credit up to that date. Whatever day they come to us, we should start picking that up. But if somebody uses a different student number, then the computer system looks at it and says, "We got two names are alike, we've got the same birthday on this same person whose names are alike, but they have different student ID numbers." And so neither one of you are gonna get paid for the student. So it's a process of going in and correcting it. What can we get it down to? You know, we're gonna work as hard as we can to get all of them if you possibly can. There's a state help desk that sometimes we can contact to see if they'll work with another system. Since we don't have control over another system, sometimes it takes that third party to help intervene. I mean, it's six thousand dollars every time we do not get one roughly. That's my concern.
And that's a legitimate concern.
Other questions? Do we have a motion?
Yes, yes.
On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. B.
School Station Evaluate Software. Mr. Odom and staff met with School Station's Joseph Womack and would like to proceed with purchasing his evaluate software in order to support principals and better facilitate the teacher evaluation process. The program will be linked to Rutherford County Schools' teacher in-service opportunities for prescriptive purposes. Thirty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars can be amended from the equipment line item in order to fund the first year cost of School Station Evaluate Software for all our schools at seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars per school. The cost of latter years is five hundred and ninety-nine dollars per school. The motion is to amend thirty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars from office of the principal equipment seventy-two four-ten dash seven oh one to contracted service, seventy-two four-oh-one dash three ninety-nine, and to approve the purchase of School Station Evaluate Software as presented.
So move. Second. Any discussion?
We learned Tuesday night in Mr. Odom's discussion about this, that this is a Rutherford County business that's providing this. Nice to support a Rutherford County business and also to have the type of collaborative conversation with this software developer where as the program evolves, Mr. Odom expressed that we would really have an active role in what it becomes as it continues to serve us and others around the state.
And that gentleman is here tonight, but it's very nice for the citizens of Rutherford County to know that you have such a high-tech, this software is sold to school systems all over the place, but they reside right here in Muffinsboro. And it's a great opportunity for us to tap into that and use it because they really give us great service. They have been for a number of years taking care of our in-service requirements. As teachers log in and sign up for in-service training through the year, this is the same company that does that. And we're looking at a prescriptive, as teachers go and principals go through the evaluation process, that we look at strands for improvement and use prescriptive in-service recommendations for teachers. And this is all part of that process to link that together. Saves time for a lot of people.
Other discussion?
I'd just like to say that I like the idea of helping the principals in the evaluation process and the teachers. This is a burdensome activity and this is just one step in trying to alleviate some of that. I think it's a realistic step, too.
Okay, on favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. General discussion. Tim?
I add my congratulations to all the new appointees. I have a special- I have a special liking for Richard Zago. Got him started back in the sixth grade many, many, many years ago. Proud of that fact. I don't know if Richard wants me to say that out loud or not, I can take it back, I guess. But I do want to say that as I came through the pipeline of Rutherford County Schools into being a principal, I felt like I was given some really good opportunities by Mr. Blair, Mr. Nolan, as an assistant principal, to kind of learn the ropes. You really don't learn them until you get in that seat. But I hope that these new folks, as you get into your new positions, will help us know if there's other things we should be doing to help principals that are coming up the line because it's really critical that as principals come in new to the position, that they're prepared to do that. And I think we've done a good job of that, but I think it would be helpful if you would reinforce that to us or share with us ways that we might should be doing different things as other people come up the line so we make sure that we have people properly trained and prepared.
Mr. Tackett is talking about an older Mr. Blair.
Yes, yes, different Mr. Blair. Bubba.
Terry.
What are we, how are we doing on Eagle School audition?
I spoke with Mr. Tollitt today. He said it's going to be tight, but we do plan to be in. And he said he may not really get total release of the building until two or three days before schools start. But he said, "We're used to doing things in short order out here and we'll do it again," was what he told me.
Aaron.
If I could ask Mr. Plow the question about the policy agenda on Monday. Is it inappropriate to add things even at this late hour to that agenda? Or a lot of times in general discussion, we might talk about a policy that would be added to that.
Have you, you've sent off the material though already, right, Angel?
It has. I might wait on it. It'll come around again.
Okay. Well, I'm not saying we can't, but it would require a little bit of... If you want to, we'll take that step or you can wait till the next one rolls around?
We'll wait.
Okay.
But again, for the public's knowledge, anything that's added in policy still requires two additional board meetings to become activated policy. And I don't know what your policy is, but I want people to understand that. So it's a long process.
Other discussion? And in fact, the policy agenda is already on the line, online, so we don't want to change it.
I knew that had to have released.
Other discussion? So Monday night at 5:30?
Correct.
Will be our policy meeting. So with that, we are adjourned.